7, roll call please. Armenta, Hale, Halman.
Yes.
Candela.
Two.
Juan, here. Lozada, Sullivan.
Here.
Please rise to the ledge of the ledger. Ledge of the ledger, Mr. Tagg, United States of America, and to your body, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our heart. Okay, we now open the floor for public comments and petitions on agenda items, which would be the 2019 tax levy. Do we have any public comments this evening? Okay, moving on to the levy. Do you, Eric, are you gonna present?
It'll be a brief presentation.
Okay, well, I'll turn that over to you.
Thank you. This thing's working. There we go. Okay, thank you. I will keep this brief because I know you guys have seen this presentation before. I update it annually, and I'll add new relevant facts or frequently asked questions as I get them from the community. So I've reviewed this timeline as part of the tentative tax levy. The tentative levy was approved on November 5th. It was posted in the paper on the 6th, and then here's what the kind of the strange seven to 14 day posting timeline. It needs to be approved at today's meeting in order to meet the final requirements for the last Tuesday. So just to review, the district is part of a tax cap district, which we are held by P-Tow, which is the property tax limitation law. So we are able to get 5% or CPI, whatever's lower. So CPI for this upcoming year is 1.9%, plus any new property. The district expects anywhere from like 2% to 4% new property, about $1.5 million to $2 million this year. Formula for property tax revenue is tax rate times our equalized S-7. Tax rate times our equalized S-7. Thank you. A review of our CPI by years is, we had a decline in the 2014-15 year, but we've since seen a little bit of an increase, and it's kind of leveling off right now, about 2% on average the last three years. And with EAV, just an inverse relationship between the amount of EAV a district has and the tax rate. So as property taxes increase, the factor in CPI, the tax rates decrease. Does this whole thing just keep cutting off on me?
You're good.
You can probably speak. I'll just skip to the end if you guys want at that point. So for this year, the tax extension shows the last two years, actual extension that we received, and the blue column is what we proposed, the balloon levy the district, the board we approved tonight. But the yellow column I have there is what I believe the actual extension is going to be this year. That's kind of the best guess we have based on estimates. So as a reminder to the board, we balloon levy every single year, and that's a process of asking for more money than we reasonably expect to receive. And that's just the ability to capture any new property tax, any new revenue or new construction that may be present in the district. And that's, we had this strictly based on, since we are a tax cap district. And I always kind of end with some frequently asked questions. I know these are really long, so I don't bother reading them. But it's just a good review for any community members, and I always direct it here if people have questions. So really, why doesn't the district lower its levy? That's kind of the biggest question that a district may receive. And you really can't lower the revenue, sorry, lower the levy if you are part of a tax cap district. Because if you forfeit the revenue on this year, you forfeit it every subsequent year, since the levy is always calculated by the previous year's extension. And then we always look for comparisons as far as where we're at in our community. So you can see, we're kind of in the lower portion in terms of EAV, which means we're really up near the top, or in some years, the top in terms of our tax rate. So are there any questions? All right, so there'll be a lot of things approved tonight once we convene into the regular session, and I appreciate
Okay, moving on, do we have any public comments or petitions on non-agenda items? Okay, there being no public comments, can I have a motion to adjourn this special meeting? Candela?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Armenta?
Yes.
Hale?
Yes.
Halman?
Yes.
Juan?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, Juan, to order the combined meeting for Diamond Lake School District 76. Roll call please. Armenta?
Yes.
Hale?
Yes.
Candela?
Here.
Juan?
Yes.
Lozada? Sullivan?
Here.
Okay, we now again open the floor for public comments on agenda items. Okay, there being no public comments, we will move on to presentations.
Thank you. I'm going to turn the floor over to Mr. Wilford, who is going to represent the district leadership team today, recognizing one of our team members for outstanding service with our lovely diamond awards. Mr. Wilford, you do the honors, please.
Yeah, thank you very much. Well, good evening and welcome. I'd like to just take a moment to say I'm very honored to be the voice to represent and present this on behalf of DLT and the entire Diamond Lake School community. We sit and talk about performance and outstanding celebrations and people who do a good job, and a lot of times, the people who do the hardest work sometimes get missed. And Chris Thibodeau is one of those people who is really the glue that helps keep our buildings and our district functioning in such an important role. And that became even more evident this year as we did this giant undertaking of transitioning the district and reallocating and reassigning classrooms and teachers. So on behalf of DLT, I'd like to read our thanks to you, Chris, and to why we want to recognize you collectively as a DLT. This past summer, Diamond Lake School District 76 took on a huge reorganization and remodeling project. This project impacted all stakeholders, students, parents, community members, and staff. There were many facets to this process that need to be coordinated and communicated. Chris Thibodeau took on this challenge, and through his experience, knowledge, expertise, communication skills, and leadership, we were able to open the doors to our new schools on schedule. That was amazing. That was amazing. Chris worked and works tirelessly on his responsibilities, and is always willing to do what is needed to come to a positive resolution. No problem is too big or too small. Chris is truly an invaluable resource to our district. The district is fortunate to have a person of Chris's skills and talents working for it. The success of opening the schools for the 2019-2020 school year is very much the result of the professional approach that Chris Thibodeau brings to our buildings each and every day. On behalf of the students, the staff, the parents, the community, and the DLT and the board of that, I'd like to say thank you, Chris. Would you please come on up?
Thank you. It's awesome.
Right under website.
Thank you. All true. All true.
Well, if I could just add, I mean, Chris, pretty much, or Mr. Wilford summed it all up, because this is how we all feel about you. But I think he does represent, like you said, the entire staff, because I have, and I can say in my own experience, worked with someone in Chris's position who is so well-liked and so well-respected by everybody, whether it's the students, or staff, or the leadership team, or even community members. So I just want to say thank you for that, for just being you, and welcome to Mrs. Thibodeau, and all the behind-the-scenes support that I know that you do too, because he's here late, and he comes in early, and answers texts at all hours of the night and on the weekends. I want to thank you for your support.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you. And then our next presentation, we have Ms. Sheridan Jervinson from IASB, which is our auditing firm. And each of the board members has a full report that we audit in front of them, and I know Ms. Jervinson is going to give the overview of just the highlights and the summary from our district audit.
Well, good evening. Again, yeah, my name is Sheridan Jervinson, and I'm the partner in the Obersol audit this year. I just want to start off first by saying thank you to Eric and the staff just with helping us get the audit done. It is not fun for them, being just hounded with questions and constant requests for information, and so their help is essential in getting the audit done timely. I'm good? And so just appreciate that. Overall, the audit went very well. The records are in good condition. We had a few journal entries, but nothing significant or anything that was of really concern. A lot of it's just reclasses and things that need to be done to get them to the point that we can, the state wants to see them. The first thing in the audit report is our opinion, and it states in there that with all the testing we did, everything we looked at, that we felt the financial statements were free from material misstatements. It also talks in there about internal controls. And while we don't give an opinion on internal controls, we spend a lot of time looking at them. If there was fraud to occur or anything to occur, it's going to be the internal controls that catch that. Typically, it's not the external audit that does. And so we spent a lot of time not only making sure that there's policies and procedures in place, but also sitting down with people that are processing payroll and accounts payable, and making sure that they're following those procedures, as well as making sure that one person doesn't have too much control over one area. And so just making sure that everything is good there and didn't have any issues as far as internal controls. Typically, if there was any concern, any significant deficiency, we would issue what's called a management letter, which would come to your attention so that you would be aware. But we had nothing like that this year, so that's all good news. One of the things that we do look at, the first statement in the financial statements is essentially balance sheet, so asset liabilities. One of the things we look at is your cash reserves on hand at the end of the year. We recommend the districts have at least three months of reserves on hand, and then on the other side, once you start to get up to about 20 months of reserves, that's when you can start to get tax objections. And so your reserves right now, education fund is a little over nine months, operations and maintenance is about 14 months, transportation, five months, and IMRF, 8.5 months. So definitely in that range, over the three months, but not at that high level either. So those are all good levels to be at. As far as the revenues and expenses for the funds, overall, there was a decrease for the year, if I can find it, of $5 million. The one thing you have to take into account is that there was a lot spent on capital projects during the year. So when you take that out, there was actually an increase for the year, a little, about $250,000, and then went into the fund balance. Since you are on a cash basis, you are, you can, the results could be fluctuated based on when you're getting property taxes, when you're getting state money, and so sometimes you're at the mercy of those. And this year, things were pretty consistent with the past year. So property taxes, you received about 50% before the end of the year, which is consistent with the past years. And the state as well is, at least now, paying fairly on time and regularly, so there was no significant late payments at that point. The other thing that we do look at is your financial profile that IASB calculates. It's on a scale of zero to four, four being the best. Last year, you were at a 3.8, and then you were at a 3.8 as well this year, which is recognition, which is the highest level that you can be at. And the only thing that's keeping you away from the four is just the long-term debt and the level that that's at. So as that gets paid down, or your EAV increases, that ratio will. And then finally, the other thing that we do is what's called a single audit. Since you have $750,000 of federal monies that you receive throughout the year, we are required to do an audit for the federal government. So we're actually looking at the grants and looking at the clients, making sure that everything is in line. So we had two, what I consider pretty minor findings. One of those programs we tested, National School Lunch Program, and there was a couple students out of the sampling we took that were incorrectly put into free or reduced or vice versa. So again, nothing major, but just something that we have to report. And then there was a verification form that was just not properly signed. So again, pretty minor. The important thing is that the dollars are being tracked properly, and there's proper backup, and all that was good. All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to our business agenda for the evening. Items under the omnibus vote agenda are considered routine and/or non-controversial and will be approved by one motion. If anyone, board member, staff, administrator, or citizen wishes to have a separate vote on this item or items, that item or items will be pulled from the omnibus vote agenda and voted on separately. Be it resolved that the Diamond Lake 76 Board of Education accepts and approves the omnibus vote agenda, items A through B as listed. May I have a motion to approve?
Second?
Sullivan? Yes.
Halman?
Yes.
Armenta? Hale?
Yes.
Candela?
Yes.
Juan?
Yes.
Moving on to the press issues before we vote on this, if anyone have any questions? Discussion, we didn't really discuss it very much at our last meeting, so I just wanted to make sure before we move to No? Okay. Whereas policy creation and updates and changes to adaptive policies are provided for District 76 through the subscription to Policy Reference Educational Subscription Service, Press, from the Illinois Association of School Boards, IASB, and whereas the policy committee reviewed the policies in a first reading of the policies was held at the November 19 combined board meeting, therefore, be it resolved, the Diamond Lake School District 76 Board of Education moves to approve the policy changes as presented and reviewed in IASB Press Issue 102. They are as follows: 220 Powers and Duties of the Board of Education Indemnification; 270 Vacancies on the School Board Violating Vacancies; 210 Board Member Conflict of Interest; 2105 Ethics and Gift Ban; 2110 Qualification, Term, and Duties of Board Officers; 220 Types of School Board Meetings; 220 School Board Meeting Procedure; 2250 Access to District College Records; 2260 Human Grievance Procedure; 350 Administrative Personnel Other Than Superintendent; 415 Identity Protection; 430 Revenue and Investments; 440 Incurring Debt; 460 Purchases and Contracts; 480 Accounting and Audits; 4110 Waver of Student Fees; 4150 Facility Management Building Programs; 4170 Safety; 4175 Convicted Child Sex Offender Screening Notifications; 4190 Targeted School Violence Prevention Program; 510 Equal Employment Opportunity of Minority; 520 Workplace for Harassment Prohibited; 530 Higher Rate Processing Criteria; 550 Drug and Alcohol-Free Workplace, E-Cigarette, Tobacco, and Cannabis Prohibition; 590 Abused and Neglected Child Reporting; 510 Staff Development Program; 5120 Employee Ethics, Conduct, and Conflict of Interest; 5125 Personal Technology and Social Media Usage and Conduct; 5150 Personnel Records; 5190 Teacher Qualifications; 5200 Terms and Conditions of Employment Dismissal; 5220 Substitute Teachers; 5250 Leave of Absence; 5260 Student Teachers; 5285 Drug and Alcohol Testing for School Bus and Commercial Vehicle Drivers; 5290 Employment Termination and Suspicions; 5330 Sick Days, Vacation, Holidays, and Leaves; 6150 School Accountability; 620 School Year Calendar and Day; 660 Curriculum Content; 665 Student Social and Emotional Development; 6150 Home and Hospital Instruction; 6180 Extended Instructional Programs; 6210 Instructional Materials; 6270 Guidance Counseling Program; 6300 Graduation Requirements; 6310 High School Credit for Non-District Experiences for Substitutions for Entering Students; 6320 High School Credit for Proficiency; 720 Harassment of Students Prohibited; 7150 Agency of Police Interviews; 7180 Prevention of and Response to Bullying, Intimidation, and Harassment; 7190 Student Behavior; 7200 Suspension Procedures; 7270 Administering Medicine of Students; 7290 Suicide and Depression Awareness and Prevention; 734 Student Records; 830 Visitors to and Conduct on School Practice. May I have a motion to approve? Halman?
Yes.
Candela?
Yes.
Armenta?
Yes.
Hale?
Yes.
Juan?
Yes.
Lozada?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Great. For the tax levy, we have six separate motions, just so you all know. May I have a motion to approve the adoption of the truth Halman?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Armenta?
Yes.
Hale?
Yes.
Candela?
Yes.
Juan?
Yes.
May I have a motion to approve the 2019 tax levy in the following amounts, for which the total is $15,867,390. Education Fund, $12,250,000. O&amp;M Fund, $1,400,000. Transportation Fund, $900,000. Working Cash Fund, $75,000. IMRF Fund, $200,000. Social Security Fund, $200,000. Fire Prevention and Safety Fund, $1,000. Tort Immunity Fund, $75,000. Special Education Fund, $750,000. CEDOL, IMRF, $16,390. May I have a motion to approve? Sullivan?
Yes.
Candela?
Yes.
Armenta?
Yes.
Halman?
Yes.
Juan?
Yes.
May I have a motion to approve the resolution for the working cash levy in the amount of $75,000?
So moved.
Halman?
Yes.
Candela?
Yes.
Armenta?
Yes.
Juan?
Yes.
Lozada?
Yes.
May I have a motion to approve the adoption of the resolution for fire prevention and safety levy in the amount Candela?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Armenta?
Yes.
Halman?
Yes.
Juan?
Yes.
May I have a motion to approve the adoption of the resolution for the special education fund levy in the amount Halman?
Yes.
Juan?
Yes.
Armenta?
Yes.
Candela?
Yes.
Lozada? May I have a motion to approve the adoption of the resolution for the CEDOL, IMRF levy in the amount of $16,390? Second? Sullivan?
Yes.
Armenta?
Yes.
Halman?
Yes.
Candela?
Yes.
Juan?
Yes.
Did you go first? Okay. Oh, yes. Okay, fantastic. That concludes all the tax levy cases. Okay, be it resolved, the Diamond Lake 76 Board of Education approves the recommendation toward Dr. Sharmel Lewis, $12,000 discretionary performance bonus, according to Section 5 of current legal contract. May I have a motion to approve? Halman?
Yes.
Candela?
Yes.
Juan?
Yes.
Armenta?
Yes.
Lozada?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Be it resolved, the Diamond Lake 76 Board of Education approves the resolution authorizing and providing for an installment purchase agreement for the purpose of paying the cost of purchasing real or personal property for both, in and for the district, and for the issue of not to exceed $3,700,000 general obligation debt certificates, limited tax Series 2020, for the purpose of altering, repairing, and affording school buildings and facilities to the district, and authorizing the proposed sale of said certificates to the purchaser thereof. May I have a motion to approve? Sullivan?
Yes.
Candela?
Yes.
Armenta?
Yes.
Halman?
Yes.
Juan?
Yes.
Moving on to personnel, thank you for that, too. Be it resolved, the Diamond Lake 76 Board of Education accepts and approves the personnel items as depicted on the agenda. There is one leave of absence. May I have a motion to approve?
Second?
Candela?
Yes.
Halman?
Yes.
Armenta?
Yes.
Juan?
Yes.
Lozada? Great. That concludes our business agenda. Moving on to board discussion. Okay, well, we will move on. We have no FOIA requests. Moving on to our communications.
So the second item in your board packet under notice is the communication, the board calendar is always there just for review, but is the special education audit. That has been shared with the district leadership team, and tomorrow it'll be shared with the entire staff. There's two parts to it. There is the entire report, and then there's also an executive summary, and included at four, so you have some time to read it, digest it, and then what the district leadership team is going to do is sit down in January and kind of go through each of the areas of strength, and make sure that we continue to capitalize on those, and make stronger, enhanced that. Then also, there are some program recommendations, and then kind of create an action plan, and possibly even work with Dr. Powell, who conducted the audit, and work with her support, whether it's with professional development, or picking out some resources and materials, but setting up some meetings as far as streamlining some of our communications. So we'll come back to you, come back to you with an action plan after the district leadership team has time to review and digest the information, and then if Dr. Powell agrees team has time to review or digest the information, and then if Dr. Powell agrees to work with us in what capacity and what that timeline and the cost will look like. So we're hoping to bring that back to you at the January meeting.
So I apologize.
She's a retired special ed administrator, and so she is an independent consultant right now.
Is she not?
No, no. No, she's completely independent. And that's all that's in the, um, those communications.
Moving on to public comments on non-agenda items. Do we have any public comments this evening on non-agenda items? Okay, there are no public comments. We move on to others.
So just quick in there for you, as you know, the teachers and Mr. Gans collect data on our parents who attend our family, which will attend parent-teacher conferences, and so this is just a fall of 2019 data that we have the parents who attended each of the conferences at the middle school, the intermediate school, as well as Diamond Lake School. So as you can see, intermediate school really exceeded almost ninety percent of their families attending the Diamond Lake School, coming in at close second, what's that new percent? And I know that we didn't actually have this meeting yet, but is on the calendar, just scheduled with Mr. Cunningham, as well as Mr. Wilford and Dr. Dracula of looking at increasing the opportunities and the scheduling for Western Middle Schools, includes more families. And so whether we look at reorganizing the teacher schedule or the parent-teacher conference schedule, just to get more parents the opportunity to come in, and we haven't had a chance. The day that we had this scheduled was the power outage. So we have postponed it, and we'll come back to that probably right after break, and we'll get some ways to restructure that for either this spring or next fall.
So is that a low turnout? Are you insinuating that it's partly a function of the number of slots that were available that people could just not schedule a conference?
No, the step, if I may, each grade level was pretty much full. Eighth grade had a few open spots, but pretty much, the problem is we only have twenty-four slots.
Yeah, and that's so, it isn't a matter that parents were not medic, it's just there wasn't a time period.
There's not enough. Yeah, it's a size ten foot with a size nine shoe. You know, there's just not enough. So trying different, looking at creative ways to schedule the evening and free up more time for parents to meet with maybe an individual teacher rather than the full team. That's what we're struggling with. And I, the consortium of Stevenson Middle Schools, that was a topic earlier in the year. Everybody struggles with the way to fit a whole team of a hundred-plus kids in a single day. You know, when you're a classroom teacher, you have twenty-four children, you theoretically have one slot for every child. But when you have a hundred and ten on a team, it's very hard.
Yeah, I'm glad you're looking into that. We got a lot of feedback from parents just saying that they weren't able to get conferences and were concerned, and also just that for those that did get conferences, that the teachers seemed very rushed having to move, and so it seems like it's a challenge for everyone.
It's a challenge. It's a, it's a big challenge.
And they get all levels.
Yeah.
So we're definitely looking into that.
Great.
Thank you.
And then the second and third, I'm just going to hand the floor over to Mr. Rogers. First one is just an update on the district plow truck that we are going to use. And also, I have to see the enrollment study. I know a few meetings ago, we talked about Munderline High School to end District 75 doing an enrollment study, and then wanted to see if we wanted to be a part of that. So Mr. Rogers attended a presentation last week from the organization who was doing it, so I think he's going to give two updates on both of those items.
Yes. So just wanted to let you know, Daisy sent out an update a little bit before the meeting started, that I changed the memo for the district plow truck. The reason is the original recommendation that I had, there was some logistical concerns with working with that vendor, and just because of that, I wanted to recommend purchasing off the state program. If we weren't going to get the truck right away, it made more sense that we could wait a few more months to receive it and have a discounted cost. So the recommendation is to purchase from Bob Riddings Ford. They won the purchasing contract with Ford F two-fifties, which is exactly the vehicle we're looking for, and includes a plow package. So the district vehicle currently is, I think it's about eight years old. It's seen a lot of wear and tear, and the plow no longer functions, and we're spending a lot of money to actually fix this. So our maintenance staff is stuck using their own personal vehicle to do, you know, district business and things like that. So we're very much in need of one, and the price of thirty-four, just under thirty-five thousand is very good considering, includes a brand-new plow package on it. So I'm just trying to bring that to you and let you know why the recommendation changed. So we were planning on moving forward, and we won't see this truck for about three or four months at this point, though. Any questions?
What was the recommendation yesterday about what was the difference?
So the original dealer was a, so we went out to bid.
Was the different dealer?
Correct. So we went out to bid a few weeks ago. We received no actual bids, and I'm not entirely sure why. In talking with Chris Tivido, I think it's because plows that are currently on lots are selling for a much bigger premium that school districts can buy for. So they're selling those very frequently. We were contacting a bunch of local dealers, and there's one that had a vehicle for us, and in negotiating a price and delivery timeline, those just broke down, and they weren't able to provide it. So that really changed this morning, unfortunately. We were planning on moving ahead. So the next vendor, this Bob Riddings Ford, they're the ones that won the state purchase, they were part of the state purchasing co-op, and won the contract to sell that two-fifty. So they sell it to everybody over the state. Very professional, and I like working with them throughout my discussions. So the only downfall, we can't get it for three to four months at this point. So we do have a plow contract that'll support this. The biggest benefit is we're going to be able to bring this in-house next year, and it'll pay for itself in two years, based on the cost.
And one plow truck is enough to cover all of the necessary plowing?
It's enough to supplement our plowing. We do have a contract with Countryside Incorporated, they're the ones that do our landscaping here. They also have a plowing division, so we signed a contract with them to handle all plowing duties for this year. So we're very well covered for this year. The plow truck that we have right now is just like an ancillary benefit, cases and the issues with them being able to come out, so.
So next year and beyond, though, all plowing would be in-house?
Sorry, I see your question. Yeah, next year, one plow truck is going to be plenty sufficient to do our district. The other truck, we're able to kind of fix it to a point that it acts as a good secondary vehicle, too, but we will have a good primary. So, yeah, that'll all be kind of taken care of by Chris Tivido, and he'll be responsible for the maintenance of the truck.
And our staff will, they'll be able to fit that in with the amount of normal duties as that entail people coming in early, staying after, how do they cover their normal duties and the plowing responsibility?
Yeah, and that's a great question. So normally, they'll start at about six AM anyway. When there is heavy snow and extreme cold, they're used to coming in much earlier to check pipes. So it's something that they're already here, so usually they'll double-team it. One will handle plowing, the other one will handle building, and supervision element of that, and they're really good at staggering their times, because they don't have to devote any kind of sidewalks. That's something that day porters are responsible for at each school. So they're really, with two schools in such small proximity, it's something that's really easy, especially when staff are not here. And when cars are here, all you're able to do is just do around the lot. So it's a pretty quick process. We got two really good guys, and they're, it's, this recommendation is mostly from them, because they're eager to bring it in-house. That's good to hear.
Trying to give you an update on that.
Oh, yeah. So Wolf Campbell Associates, they're the company that provided our quote, and that we've been working with District Seventy-Five and One Twenty on doing an enrollment study. They're a very large company. I was a little unfamiliar with them, because I've heard of working with Dr. Casarda. They were the enrollment study that we had done in 2013. So this company works with most municipalities in Lake County. They specialize really in Lake County. So this process is kind of a, and I'm sorry, they provided One Twenty with their enrollment studies in the last at least two decades, I believe. So it was a good meeting that we had. We just talked about logistics, what their process is in terms of providing an enrollment study, and it's really a two-way street in terms of the district providing our six-day enrollment information for the last ten years. They are very well tapped in with any future developments that, you know, hasn't been heard of outside of a couple of meetings with Munderline. So there's a few things down the pipeline that is going to be interest a little bit more to One Twenty that could have some effect on us. So I think it's a perfect time with us leasing Fairhaven right now, and in three years, we need to make a decision, or two years, we need to make a decision whether we're going to be selling the property, continuing the lease, or taking it back over. So I think this enrollment study will help out with that, and at this point, our data is unreliable in terms of what Dr. Casarda provided. So with District One Twenty, they do a really three- to four-year cycle of enrollment studies. That's not something I, you know, would necessarily recommend at this time, but it's, it's just a good gauge that we need to be more relative in terms of our, more recent in terms of our information. So their report, and I can provide you kind of a PDF of what they've done for the other districts. It's a good summary in terms of providing a lot of graphs and like birth data, really where we're trending, where Lake County's trending. So we're kind of landlocked, they understand that, but there's still some, you know, potential room for expansion that they're pretty well tapped into. So I think it's a good opportunity.
Do you remember by that cost again?
Yeah, it was seventy-six hundred dollars to do the enrollment study, so it's a really large cost. District Seventy-Five and us are both responsible for seventy-six hundred dollars, and then District One Twenty is at twelve thousand dollars.
Why is our cost the same as Seventy-Five and not significantly less than One Twenty or so small?
It's kind of the same amount of preparation that goes into, from what they've explained, it's, the amount of work, we provide kind of the amount of data in terms of students, but the amount of work that goes into talking to municipalities is kind of the same for everybody, because the districts, we really kind of blend in a lot of times with some, you know, developments. I think it might have been more of a convenience for their fee, they kind of had it split. It's pretty hard for them to say, we're going to spend two hours on your district, two and a half hours on that. I think that was the.
If we weren't going in with them, what would it cost us?
It was about twenty thousand dollars to do an enrollment study.
Okay, so that's a good.
Exactly. It's a large cost no matter what. Now, this is not something I've budgeted for this year, but it's something that I have contingencies for in our buildings and grounds, you know, fund for these types of future work. Right now, we're going to be underspending in a lot of the different areas. So I do have the money in the budget, it's just not, I didn't understand that much, but so I just want to let you know, it wasn't something that was originally budgeted for, but it's something I had preparations for. So I think it would be a good study. It'll be six months till we actually see data.
Okay.
And another question that was asked about census, so we're going to be going through the census, and that was a question about, you know, does it make sense to wait until that data is available? They said that the last census data, it took at least two years for it to even become relevant and usable. They're going to a more electronic format, they think it's going to be a little quicker, but they said this is secondary information for school districts anyway. It's more relevant for municipalities, things like that. So it really wasn't much of a concern on their end in getting more accurate data, waiting for that census to get them out.
Do you know when they're going to ask us to take action or proceed, is it like when we have to commit?
Yeah, we don't need, I believe, official board action. I think some direction from the board would be great. They'd love to start doing this right after the holidays. They're planning, we had a planning meeting, I was talking to their engineer, so that we'd love to get some official direction, maybe by the latest, the January board meeting, but Seventy-Five and One Twenty are fully committed to go regardless of whether we do.
Okay. I'm happy to put it back on the agenda unless you'd like to talk about it now. I mean, are you okay with us going forward with it based on the rationale you're providing?
I mean, it seems like a good idea.
Planning measure.
Particularly if you guys think it's warranted. I mean, it seems like it's a good idea, because continuing to invest in the district.